Good. Oh, is your mic on?
I'm going to reserve most of my comments for the strategic plan update. I am so pleased that we have so many people here to share their stories tonight. We have students, we have staff, so I'm really looking forward to that. One other thing I just want to highlight, on May, Friday, May 2nd, we had our Hall of Fame induction, and Carol Prosser, one of our board members, was very involved in making that happen. Mr. Morrison gave the speech, the introductory speech for our founding Board of Education. Are we good? Is it, is it good?
I believe so, yeah.
You can hear them? Oh, no, okay. It was, it was really a very nice, well-attended event. And I actually, I shared Bob's speech with everyone because there's some really fun facts in there about the starting of Watchon Hills. So it was really nice to, we honored teens, we honored the Board of Education, we honored some individuals, and the inductees brought entourages with them. So it was really, really nicely attended, but it was a lovely evening. So thank you to the whole Hall of Fame Committee, Terry McConnell, and everyone else on that committee who put a lot of time and effort into making that evening happen. Did it go out again?
It keeps cutting out.
I'll just talk really loud.
Is it going up online? This one may not, this one's not working.
I guess they're going in and out.
There was a power outage about a week ago. I think there might have, something might have happened.
We apologize for anyone watching the live stream of this. We had a power outage a couple of weeks ago that we think is affecting the microphones. So if, after the meeting though, if you go onto YouTube, there is closed captioning available in case you miss any of our scintillating conversation.
Thank you. I want to first congratulate Lisa DiMaggio, who is the Somerset County School Association's second, just elected, second Vice President for Legislation. Congratulations. People may notice that Susan Ober is not here. There's not a, I guess there's not a spot for anyone who's not here anyway. But we found out after the meeting last, I guess, a couple of weeks ago, that she had resigned, as she has moved out of town. And through the board discussion, which is item number six, we talked about how the Republican Board seat gets filled with processes for Long Island Township. For those who might remember, I guess a few years ago, we had, Peter Fallon had resigned, and we filled the spot for Lauren. So we roll out systems like the fine line. I really missed that. Just a couple of things I want to add to the board, too. A couple of things we had on each other. Eight, seven, eight and nine were added today. They're all field trips. One of note, in fact, they're all great, but the Memorial Day Parade for both Warren and Long Island Township, our marching band's going to be there. And in the C items, we had a resignation of seventeen and eighteen. Eighteen was a substitute added. Yeah. And then on the D section, we have seventeen, eighteen and nineteen. We have some financial donations to help for our Career Day. Twenty and twenty-one, we were able to get. Only information is we do the financial, financial review.
Our work, our own mention. Congratulations to Watchon Hills students Kate and Gabriella Johnson. They both competed in the USAG Excel Sapphire New Jersey State Championship, the first to New Jersey. Who competed in the sixteen and over division, tied for first place on the balance beam, and set a new state record with a score of nine point five two five. She finished in third place in the all-around. Gabriella competed in the fifteen and under division. She placed first in the vault with a score of nine point two five zero. Second place on the balance beam with a score of nine point one five zero, and managed the second-place finish in the all-around.
Continuing on with our student achievements, alumna Ishika Kowal is a facing history in ourselves, New York City Upstand Awardee, who accepted her award and scored at the event on April 8th. Now for our school events, Watchon Hills Regional High School is thrilled to announce the resounding success of its Jazz Cafe concert held on May 1st, 2025. The evening offered a delightful blend of moods, foods, and exceptional music, captivating attendees with the dynamic performance of the Watchon Hills Jazz Ensemble, directed by Mr. Christopher Wyatt. Their program featured a diverse selection of jazz compositions, including energetic showcasing the incredible musicianship of the student performers, including a notable vocal solo. Adding to the evening's unique atmosphere was a special acoustic set by Watchon Hills' very own rock band, Solstice, providing a wonderful contrast in highlighting the diverse musical talents within the school. The Jazz Cafe, a testament to the dedication of the students and the strong musical program at Watchon Hills, was well received by an enthusiastic audience of students, families, and community members. The event created a truly memorable evening, celebrating the diverse musical artistry at Watchon Hills. And finally, for our athletic update, last week, eighteen Warrior student athletes from the class of 2025 were honored, as we recognized them for Spring College Signing Day, as they continued their athletic careers at the collegiate level. The wedding comments was filled with proud families, coaches, and friends who attended the ceremony in support of this very impressive accomplishment. It has been an exciting time for the Warrior teams, and we are proud of their current achievements so far this season. So starting with baseball, the Hustle Warriors are the 2025 RAR Division Conference Champs, and will enter into the Somerset County Tournament tomorrow, May 14th, hosting Franklin at 4:00 PM. Boys Golf placed second in the NJSiA tournament, which propelled them into the meet of champions on Monday, May 12th. Boys Tennis had earned the Skyland Conference RAR Division Championship for the 2025 season. For softball, the Lady Warriors earned conference champs for the RAR Division, and are heading into the county semifinals tomorrow, the fourteenth, hosting Bound Brook at 4:00 PM. Girls Golf earns the title of the 2025 Conference Champions, RAR Division. Senior Seasonway led the way in taking first place at the NJSiA North Jersey Group A Tournament. Boys Volleyball will host Warriors in the Skyland Cup Tournament on Thursday, May 15th at 4:00 PM in Gym 56. And finally, Spring Track will compete at the NJSiA Sectional Championship, meet at Ridge High School on Friday, May 16th, with a 3:00 PM start time. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next up, Strategic Plan Update on Progress. Dr. Julie Wano, I'd introduce her.
I'd love to. Just stopping by here to make sure all of the treats are on cover, because I don't want to overwhelm yourself. We have some cookies by our food service, and we have some treats made by our culinary arts program. So please help yourself. So we have a number of students and staff members, in addition to our Strategic Plan co-chairs here tonight, to just give a little update on progress on our four strategic plan goals. This is actually the culmination of a five-year strategic plan, and we're not going to go through the entire five years tonight, just some of the highlights, some of the more recent highlights, and, you know, what the plan has really grown into. I would like to say we envisioned all of this when we developed the plan. I think we had a pretty good idea of the direction we wanted to go, but in terms of what the actualization of the plan ended up becoming, that certainly evolved over the years. I know Bob was on the planning team for both strategic plans, and, you know, the, one of the, I guess the beauties of the strategic plan is it, we develop overarching goals as well as our action plans that drive the work, and really keep us all coordinated, and help us steer district resources and priorities, our professional development. It's, you know, obviously a part of our budgeting process. But it also evolves and grows as the needs, as we continue to reassess the needs of the district each year. And that's all part of our model of continuous improvement. It's constantly, you know, reassessing, establishing where our goals are, making progress towards those, evaluating our progress, and then reassessing the needs of the district and making adjustments where we need to. And that's why each year, in the fall and the spring, we're presenting on our progress. The fall focuses more on the individual department's goals and their work towards the strategic plan goals, and then our spring meeting is usually where we have students actually speak about authentic experiences that are a direct result of the priorities we've established in the strategic plan. These are our four goals, which I think everyone is very familiar with by now. Social, emotional growth and wellness, pathways to educational success for all, imagination, creativity, innovation, critical thinking, and diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so what we've done is the co-chairs will come up and speak a little bit about just some of the highlights of each of the goals, and then we have a group of students and/or staff members that are just going to speak about some sort of artifact or authentic experience related to that particular goal, so you can get a little bit better flavor of how that goal is actualized within Watchon Hills. So without further ado, I am going to introduce those who are here to speak on our first strategic plan goal. Jason Savino and Patricia Tobin are the co-chairs for that particular goal, and Mr. Savino is here with some of his colleagues tonight, our former school counselors, Lauren Saget, our, one of our student assistance counselors, Kevin Rice, who also happens to be our Educational Services Professional of the Year. I had to tell him that he was speaking last week. And he did forget his T R. tonight. And Dr. Suzie Millar, who is part of our Rutgers Behavioral Health Initiative that we've brought into the district, and I think they're going to really speak about the integration and coordination of those services and how it helps support our students. Okay. And if each group, when you come on, would it just line introducing the next group to me, or about me? Great, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Superintendent Jewett. Thank you to the board. Thanks for everybody who's here tonight. As Dr. Jewett mentioned, happy to be here tonight to represent the first strategic plan goal, which is related to social, emotional growth and wellness. So this evening, we're addressing a vital part of Watchon Hills Strategic Plan, ensuring the well-being of students, which directly supports their learning and growth. Some national context on teen well-being, there's plenty of data out there from national organizations like the American Psychological Association, Centers for Disease Control, amongst many others, that continue to highlight a significant need for more emotional and social support for teenagers across the U.S. As parents, faculty, and community members here tonight, we know they face pressures with school, friendships figuring out who they are, and many reporting feeling lonely due to in-person connections, less in-person connections and more increased time online. So as many as two in five teens report the need for more support for matters ranging from typical academic guidance to significant mental health concerns. Here at Watchon Hills, we're seeing our students actively seeking support, with over 12,000 visits to our school counseling offices this year, again, for the range of supports that I mentioned. This highlight, this high engagement is a real compliment to the professional school counseling team we have here and other support staff in our building, indicating the trust and the connection they've built with our students. It also aligns with our goal of providing a safe and caring environment for our students here. Tonight, we're fortunate to have some of our dedicated professionals share their expertise. I know you've heard enough of me on this topic in other evenings, so I'm glad to let you hear from these other professionals working with students every day. They will explain their roles within our multi-tiered system of support model, and how their proactive work addresses the emotional, social, and academic needs of our students. So without further ado, I'd like to ask Ms. Lauren Saget, school counselor, to start us off.
Good evening. So I'm here to talk about the tier one support as a school counselor. So I'm going to give you a little background about school counselors, our academic backgrounds, and I'm going to talk a little bit about what we do with our students. So all of your school counselors, we hold master's degrees in counseling, and that includes coursework in areas like psychological development, ethics, research, program development, career counseling, multicultural counseling, working with community agencies. Additionally, counselors are required to complete clinical hours in a school setting. At WHRS, we are extremely fortunate to have counselors who, in addition to that required training, have related experience in areas that really put us in a position to better serve our students and to grow and learn from one another. Such experience includes additional clinical training in mental health counseling. We have a counselor with a second master's degree in English with experience in the field of publishing. Counselors with experience with special education certification, ABA certification, middle school teaching experience, as well as work in selective college. Admissions, career counseling, and college-level academic advisement. So that really allows us, again, to help learn from one another, feed from one another, and help our students to grow as we meet with them. So we meet with students in groups, conducting lessons that are aligned with best practices with the American School Counselor Association. For example, with our first-year students, we do strength exploration. With sophomores, we do career exploration, those start as lessons, but then, of course, with our individual key, so we're able to continue with those lessons as we meet with students individually. And those individual meetings can be anything from a student coming down to talk with us about a concern that they are having, as Mr. Savino said, whether that's something with a friend or something that's going on in their lives. It could be grade concerns, whether we're noticing a concern in their grades and we're pulling them down, or they're concerned about their grades, or a parent has been reached out about a concern about grades. And then we listen to what they're saying, we hear the struggles that they're having, and then we help to connect them with resources that can help, whether that's connecting them with math lab, writing lab, a peer tutor. And we also help them to self-advocate a lot of times, too, to have those conversations with students about what their strengths are, what their struggling, what their challenges are. We help students with time management, that can be a lot sometimes, for students that are either transitioning from the middle schools, or students who are transitioning from other schools, or students in general, who are trying to get accustomed to high school. So we do a lot of work with them on that, as well as scheduling, helping them to select selective courses, helping them to learn balance in their lives, balancing their course schedule in school with outside obligations, and also keeping in mind what their post-secondary plans are, in terms of what they're going to be doing after they leave Watchon Hills. So there are, we also then key them into personal growth opportunities that can be aligned with those goals that they have, through extracurricular clubs or other opportunities in school or with others, so summer programs, et cetera. We also do a lot of work with students when it does come time for the college application process, and helping them to identify schools or programs that are going to be in line with their goals and a good match for them, places where they're going to be able to be successful and continue to grow and learn. And that happens with students, as well as their families, having small meetings, and really helping to key them into their resources for that very important search process. While each component that I've discussed up to this point really helps students with their academic and personal growth, they also help us to keep an eye on students' mental health, and that is something that is very important to us, that really permeates every single meeting that we have with a student. So a student can come in. And they might be coming in to talk about a class that they have, or a grade concern that they have, or sometimes they're coming in to share information about, you know, something that just happens in their life that they're excited about. But because we are all curious as counselors, we keep that conversation going, and we always have an eye on, you know, well, how is the student presenting? And if we think that something isn't right, and that can be something in their body language, or it could be something verbal, non-verbal, it could be something that maybe a teacher is reporting about a student, then we're going to dig in a little further, and we're going to ask more questions. And sometimes, once we get into those conversations, we might say, hey, you know what? I'm always happy to be here as a resource for you. But it might be a good idea for you to speak with one of our student assistance counselors, and so I'm going to have Ms. Saget come up now and talk a little bit about that work that he does with students as a faculty.
Thank you, Ms. Saget. I made a little cheat sheet, but I'll try not to lose that. Yes, as Ms. Saget said, you know, we are often the second tier, if you will, and oftentimes we will get students referred to us by their school counselor. It could be, though, also, and I'll touch on this a little more, from a parent, from a teacher, from another student, from a friend, a coach. It could be from any angle, but we're, you know, getting a student's name, if you will, or that student's coming directly to us. Our role, kind of as that second tier is, it does require, if you will, a little bit more in terms of qualifications. So as a student assistance counselor, myself and Justine Missella, who's wonderful, she's my counterpart, beyond the masters in counseling and everything that comes with that, SAC student assistance counselor requires another year of graduate school courses that kind of dig a little deeper into substance use, a little psych, family connections, family systems, and also internship with an existing SAC, which I did, uh, many moons ago. But our role, in terms of, like, as Ms. Saget said, kind of that next level, if the impacts that the student is feeling from whatever's going on in their lives is impacting them more, which, again, may be the first sign, their grades, or something, they seem a little more reclusive in class, whatever maybe a coach may feel like, you know, they're missing practice, whatever it is, it's impacting their life at kind of a level that seems like maybe one of us stepping in could try to help gauge, you know, what's best for that student in the time being. And that could mean a lot of different things, depending on that student or that scenario. And while we, I mean, I know for myself, and this Missella, too, who's new this year, but it's already the case, we maintain relationships with our students, you know, through four years, a lot of students graduating this year, I've known since ninth grade on some level, and not necessarily. But, you know, our intent is to try to have somewhat of a short-term focus with our students, where we work with them for a bit, and then, you know, in theory, I don't say pass them back to Ms. Saget, if you will, but kind of, you know, back down to that tier in terms of day-to-day support. But, you know, it again depends on the student's needs. And our intent is to help that student find out, you know, what's going on, what's the basis for this. Does your parent know? You know, should we involve parents and try to bridge the gap? Maybe, maybe there's not awareness at home enough, even, you know, we're trying to bridge the gap with those, with parents. Maybe it's also involves academics on some level, so we're involving the teacher, whatever the case may be. Our intent is to try to help, help them, help themselves, problem solve, build resilience, you know, a broke mindset. You know, I have a poster in my room, that's from a long time ago, but I always liked it, it says, "You can't stop the waves, but you can learn to surf." And I think that's somewhat as we would want to try to teach our students to surf as they're going through these formative years, you know, how to approach a problem, how to deal with challenges as they come their way. We tell our students, when we visit them, you know, we don't have magic wands in our office that just fix life's problems, because that's not how it works. We want to try to work with them to problem solve and figure out what they can do for themselves, and what we or others can do for them, too. That may mean referring them out with the cooperation of the parents for some type of outside support, therapist, some significant type of outside support, maybe for a few months. It varies student to student, but yeah, again, it depends student by student, but our intent is to help them get to a place where, you know, what's going on and challenging them reduces over time. That being said, we also want to approach our role in a proactive way. And so, yes, we do get students that come to us, parents that reach out to us, teachers that refer our students, Ms. Saget and the other school counselors refer students to us, but I, myself and Mrs. Zella, also, we visit all the health classes, we do presentations with them, so, you know, every, every grade has their health classes in one marking period. We visit that, we have presentations, very interactive, we want to get our names and faces out there, explain our role, so students feel more comfortable reaching out to us on their own, and also maybe even bring a friend. We do parent evening events, which, plug real quick, we have, Ms. Zella, I'll put this together tomorrow night, and then the following Wednesday, it's a two-parter, it's called Teen Speak Through Power Somerset. That, if you go on the Warrior Weekly, that's something people can still sign up for, but it's essentially, um, this outside organization is to try to help student, parents, you know, communicate more in a healthy way with their students, especially during these trying times, these trying years of teenage years, when sometimes communication is a challenge. So that's coming up, again, on the Warrior Weekly, Teen Speak, tomorrow night or Wednesday night. But, you know, our role, and again, shout out to Active Minds, Julie Hahn over there, our club, we try to, also, that's kind of interconnected with our role is to help break the stigma of mental health, so students don't feel maybe as embarrassed to reach out and say, "I'm having a really rough week, you know, I need to talk about it." Can you talk me about that? That being said, so our role is, you know, it varies student by student, sometimes it's individual, sometimes it's group, but speaking of tiers of support, you know, in terms of what's next, if there is a concern that's heightened in terms of a crisis, which very well might be a concern where we're speaking with a student, or maybe Ms. Saget, them first, maybe with us, if we're concerned and things are at a higher level of concern, potentially, you know, suicide, self-harm, which I will say, you know, part of our role is to feel comfortable talking about these types of terms and concerns, which isn't easy for everyone, so also that's part of our role is to try to, you know, explain that to people, help, help break the stigma. But if our, if the concerns rise to a point where we feel like our role is not, you know, significant enough, our level, we may then reach out to, we are very fortunate to have Rutgers clinicians, Dr. Millar is here, to help kind of step it up to the next level where they are, you know, in-house. Countless times, they have helped us with our students, and then that's another level, they can help find the right level of support, whether it's through Rutgers or potentially outside of school as well. So, yeah, it's a team, and I'm happy to be a part of it, and I'll pass it along to you. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me here today. As Ms. Savino said, and Dr. Millar, I'm the Program Director for School and Community-Based Programs, so I oversee the school-based program here at Watchon Hills. We are thrilled to have had this partnership for the last four years. Our team is comprised of two clinicians, one full-time and one part-time clinician, and we call the program, you know, the Rutgers Life Program. And our philosophy really is that emotional wellness leads to academic success. So how can we really support the emotional wellness of the students to help them be more successful here? We really love that, the benefit of having clinicians in the building is that it really improves the collaboration. We really get to work closely with teachers, counselors, child study team, the staff. So it really is a team approach. It's not like an outpatient provider in the community that's in their style, we really get to work collaboratively with the whole team, the parent, the child, and all the individuals involved. So as a tier three support, a lot of the things that we do are really working on providing, on removing the barriers for our youth to be able to access mental health supports. So as Mr. Rice said, that might be connecting the family with resources if they happen to need a higher level of support, or connecting them here to one of our clinicians. So the types of services they might receive could be individual therapy, we do group therapy, and we're also able to do risk assessments, which I think is such an important component of what our clinicians can do. So if a student is reporting suicidal, homicidal radiations... So if a student is reporting suicidal homicidal radiations, experiencing psychotic symptoms, we're actually able to screen them onsite in the school, which really removes that stigma. The family's not needing to take them to a hospital, which can be really scary or overwhelming, or to a screening center, which can also be very overwhelming. So it's in a safe space where they're in a space that they are very comfortable with, and they're being passed over to us by their school counselor, by the SAC, by the child study team. So it's a really nice handoff where there's a lot of significant collaboration. And then the other perk is that we can then provide them with that recommendation to that higher level of care. So if a child needs a higher level of care for them to feel safe and supported at that point, we can actually make that connection. So we'll connect them directly to, through Rutgers, we have an inclusion unit, we have a partial program, and we also have connections with other community providers. So we really work closely on connecting them with all of those resources. Outside of that tier-three support, we really also work collaboratively on building capacity within the school, supporting the adults that work with the kids. So we're also involved in doing some faculty trainings as well as some parent training. And a big part of what we're doing is, we're looking at data every year regarding what are the concerns that our kids are facing. So last year, as we pulled the data, we're really seeing that kids are struggling with anxiety, depression, as Ms. Subino mentioned, that difficulty with peer relationships. So each year, we come together and we say, these are the concerns that were highlighted this year. What programming can be put into place to ensure that our kids' needs are being met? So we really focused on providing supports to reduce anxiety, reduce stress for our students this year as well as managing that social stress that they're experiencing. So we did a group where we were able to really support them with some of those social concerns that they have. So we don't focus strictly on that tier-three, we really kind of work on how can we also build capacity by giving tools to the adults that are supporting our youth. I think that's the main point that I wanted to cover. Again, we're so grateful to be here and I'll pass it back to Ms. Subino.
Thank you, Susie. So I just want to take a moment to thank our team of school counseling staff who are here, and Dr. Malar for coming out tonight to provide a little bit more insight into the work that they're doing each day to support students here at Watchon Hills. Again, we have a comprehensive school counseling program here that is crucial and dedicated to fostering support for students here at Watchon Hills. I'm pleased to next present up for the next strategic angle, Mr. Steven Sirphos and Ms. Amida Rendner. Come on up.
Good evening. Okay, so our, as Dr. Jewett said earlier, a lot of our strategic plan has been accomplished in the last year. So this year, we're really focusing in our peer outreach program, and we got a lot of students involved with that. So basically, the peer outreach program combines different groups of students that actually, you know, get involved with the different programs. And basically, the students actually help each other in accomplishing the goals that they're trying to accomplish. So I know Ms. Wicke has some students here tonight that are going to be speaking, and she's also going to overview the peer outreach program.
Yep, so last year I had the privilege of teaching the peer outreach class, which was amazing, with our senior and post-grad students, and this year-
Advance to the next slide, because that has some of the photos and the information.
Sure. And this year, we had the privilege of offering it to our ninth grade students. And we're going to hear a little bit more from Ms. Tara Getchman and her students about their experience. And what's really great is I learned everything about peer outreach from Ms. Getchman. So I'm so glad that you'll get to hear from her, as I had the chance to share my experience along with my students last year. And some of my students from last year are here this year. So you'll get to hear from them and see how they've grown and how it changes from various teachers, various students, and also now subjects. So we're looking to expand, we're hoping that we can continue this with other subject areas. But this year, we really got to highlight the arts, and I think you're going to hear some really great things from our students. And it's been wonderful to see their progress. Along with that, we are so happy to share that we were able to expand our career internship program. I know when I started as the transition coordinator a few years back, I only had two students on my roster. I'm so happy to share that we have about 16 for next year. And I just want to thank our counselors and case managers, because we've been meeting with students. This is their junior year, getting ready for senior year, and just hearing their career goals is so wonderful. They're really excited to get out there into the community. And, you know, I just want to highlight some of the places, because I know that was one of the areas we were concerned about is, you know, how do we get the outreach to our community? Our community really responded to us. Not only are we in the sending districts, but we're beyond there, in Bridgewater and Providence. We're even expanding from just the, you know, typical retail and restaurants into assisted living establishments. And every time I do my site visits, people are so excited to talk about our students here at Watchon Hills and how they're doing so great, and they say, please remember us for next year. So we're creating these lists, we're getting the word out for our students. And again, we are just so proud of what we were able to accomplish and to help them achieve their goals with career internship.
So should we bring Ms. Getchman up?
Yeah, Ms. Getchman, if you would like to come up with your team.
You can share some of your experience.
And the students also asked us, how come the board members didn't put their cell phones in the cellphone pocket tonight? I am the vice principal in charge of the cellphone infractions, so you'll be hearing from me later. Come on up, guys.
Good evening, board members, I'm Tara Getchman. I co-teach the peer outreach arts class with Susan Huff, who unfortunately couldn't make it tonight. But we are pleased to have three wonderful students here, Sam Taylor and Helena, who will be sharing their experiences and insights about our peer outreach class. So Helena's going to start.
Hi, everyone. We are pleased to share insights regarding our students participating in the peer outreach arts class, where they engage collaboratively both for the students in the program and for our school community as a whole. This program has significantly contributed to creating an inclusive environment within our school. Students have embraced the opportunity to work alongside their peers with special needs, demonstrating empathy and understanding that transcends the classroom walls. Through collaboration, our students are not only enhancing their artistic abilities, but also developing crucial life skills such as teamwork, communication, and problem solving. These experiences prepare them for future challenges in diverse settings. The interactions between peer mentors and special needs students have led to the formation of meaningful relationships. This has fostered a sense of belonging and acceptance, allowing all students to thrive in a supportive atmosphere. The peer outreach arts class has not only enriched the students involved, but has also had a profound impact on our wider school community. The positive attitudes and behaviors exhibited by these students contribute to a culture of kindness and respect, which benefits everyone. The peer outreach arts class is a testament to the power of collaboration and the importance of inclusive education. We encourage continued support for such initiatives as they play a vital role in shaping compassionate, well-rounded individuals who are prepared to contribute positively to society. Mrs. Huff and Mrs. Getchman invited us to reflect on our time together in this class. They asked us to share some of our favorite memories, what we learned, and what we thought of the class itself. Here are some comments from our classmates about peer outreach. One student said, "My favorite memory in class was creating the bulletin boards with a few other classmates in the class. Being able to collaborate and have fun with classmates while thinking of creative ideas that advocates for inclusivity was really fun." Another student said, "This class was truly my favorite class. I enjoyed spending time with the peer outreach students each day. This class feels like family. All the students and teachers care for one another so much. This class has impacted me personally by understanding the importance of learning from each and every person and how it's important to listen to one another and always be there for each other no matter what. This class has made me love working with students, especially those who need my help. I'm going to miss this class so much and see all the children as I feel we have grown into a family-like relationship. I've also learned so much about disabilities, and while not all disabilities are visible to the eye, it's important to always be considerate and caring of others. While in college, I will not be majoring in anything relating to working with children, but I hope to have the opportunities to take classes just like peer outreach, as it was truly the most special part of my day and my favorite class. I loved each and every one of the children and all the activities that we did." Another student stated, "This class has impacted me a lot by understanding how to be supportive for others. You never know when someone's having a bad day or is going through a difficult time. And this class has given me the chance to take the time out of my day to stop and socialize with others, to check in with not only others' thoughts and emotions, but also with my own feelings." Another student said that this class helped me grow with my relationship with my peers. I enjoyed becoming friends with them through class, the care club, and because of my positive experiences, I joined the flag football team. Another student said, "This class has been one of my favorite in this school. It has confirmed that I want to work in a field with people with disabilities when I am older, and it's taught me a lot about the field." Lastly, and a important thing I learned is that we are all the same and yet different in many ways. We all require the same amount of kindness, we all require connection and friends, we are special in our own ways. I've grown to realize how much I have in common with my freshman peers and how special my life has been this year because of them. Thank you so much for listening, we hope you have a great evening.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Is Thiago going to come up next?
No.
Oh, that's right, my bad. Oh, hold on. Strategic Plan Goal Number Three, we have Mr. Maluso and Mr. Fire.
So the exciting news from this year is the Design Lab was opened up in January, a lot of excitement, and immediately used by the robotic team. And some classes started having some sessions in there throughout the year utilizing space and equipment. If you get a chance to visit the space, you'll see it's very, very busy right now with new equipment and a lot of new designs being implemented by both robotic and engineering courses and product leadership. Mr. Flacher will speak a little bit about the curriculum work we have done around design thinking for next year and how we're planning to utilize the space in the future years.
Thank you. So I'm happy to share a few more updates on our work towards Goal Three, which is ensuring that all students engage in enriched, innovative learning experiences that build creativity, critical thinking, and global awareness. This year, we made a lot of progress. We've developed a new course that will run next year, it's called the Foundations of Creative Design. We'll utilize the Design Lab for that course. And we've also trained, provided training for the teachers who are going to be running that course so that they're ready to foster inquiry and innovation right from day one. In addition to that training, we've also had over 30 teachers across the district participate in design thinking and ethical design workshops. Those sessions were, many of them attended follow-up sessions, where we focused on integrating those strategies into their instruction. This work is already beginning to take shape and shape our classroom experiences in very meaningful ways. To highlight that impact, I'd like to introduce one of our French teachers, Ms. Alicia Boz. She's going, she's been applying the principles of ethical design in her classroom, and she'll share how that approach has been helping her students think more deeply and creatively about the world around them. Ms. Boz?
Good evening. Et bonsoir à tous. Bonjour. Bonsoir. Oui, après six heures, bonsoir. Après six, you can say bonsoir.
So good evening, everyone. I'm really excited this evening to talk about the great work our students have been doing in the French one classroom, which is really exciting to know. Again, I've been invited to share with you what this looks like in our French classroom. So we're going to be talking about imagination, creativity, innovation, and critical thinking. And again, what it looks like with those activities our students have been working on. And so this evening, these students that are going to be sharing their experiences, they cover activities on the topic of school life. So they talked about the topic of school life. And so this is all relating to the Francophone world. And so we'll be bringing those practices, perspectives, and products from the Francophone world, all those French-speaking countries, so not just France, but other French-speaking countries around the world. And all of these activities were designed based on that thematic, that thematic unit, the school-like unit. It's worth noting that these are Level One students. So these are all students that, they might have had background in middle school or before they came to our building, but they all started this year in September. So I say this just to keep in perspective, in the perspective of the growth that they've made up until May. Right, our school year hasn't wrapped up yet, but within those short months that have brought us to May, these are French one students. And so these are students that are building sentences, they're building vocabulary from day one, where you can learn to say bonjour, right? And so we're building languages, and so, just to keep that in perspective as to the type of activities that they are working on in our class. So Jolie Williams is going to be talking to you about this evening, a research project that our students worked on, where they had to renovate a school. It was called Renovez Monique, and they had to renovate a school by researching first a Francophone country that they had the choice of. And they had to bring into that project practices, right, products, and also perspectives from that country that they researched. Kimberly Vasquez is going to be sharing with us an activity in which the students had to present solutions to the rising cost of school supplies for Parisian families. So these are all families that are families in need. We watched a report, and then the students did some building activities in class before they had to break, and then come up with solutions to how they would address this issue in the Francophone world. And then Rhina Jean is going to wrap up and also share with us about handling dilemmas. The particular dilemma I gave the students was purchasing school supplies and values where, I'm not going to, are you going to go into detail more about the dilemma? Yeah, so I'm going to let Rhina share that. And so we had it for project, there were some in-class activities, and then more open-ended where they had to do some writing and speaking using the vocabulary, the grammar, and then also tying in the culture for our thematic unit into those activities. So it was a three-fold. Again, working through these activities, it really required the students to not just work with the vocabulary and the language, the grammar from that point of view, but also to interpret, right? They had the issues that they were interpreting, right? And also, they had to work together, right, they had to collaborate and put these ideas together while creating those, developing those creative solutions to some pretty complex problems, all while keeping their ideas in the target language. And they did that. It involves not only making connections to the target culture, right, and relating their daily life to what it looks like in this perhaps Parisian family's life, but also to relating to their peers, right, and people that they see in the building every day. The student solutions, it really conveyed a very tremendous amount of empathy. I see this not only throughout these activities, but other activities that we have in the classroom. They have a lot of empathy that they share on a daily basis. So I wanted also to share a big thank you to our district families who are doing this at home and reinforcing these values at home that we can see they're coming from the home. And I can say that their creativity, it really shined. You guys really had some very creative and unique ideas in French that they were able to share and put together so eloquently with their, with their language and French. And it's been a really big pleasure to see that their growth over the year and to see what they've, the solutions that they've come up with working together. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Kim, this is Jolie.
Yeah, I'm Jolie. And that's Rhina.
Hi.
And we're here to talk about what we have learned in French class. We learn with respect topics about hospitality, empathy, expanding our creative thinking, expanding our ethical learning, and also how to show compassion for those who, in our community and globally. So French with Madame Boz is more than just learning another language.
Okay, so I'm going to start with what activity I highlighted. One activity that I really enjoyed working on that highlighted the expanding our creative thinking was the creating schedules and creating our ideal classroom and designing our schedules beyond- and designing our schedules beyond feeling. Sorry. So we designed schedules and we created our ideal classroom. And in this, designing schedules is like more than creating time blocks and also our ideal classroom. And we learned, through this, we learned managing time management, and also how you can use different ways to, different ways to create a schedule and create your classroom to ways that it fits your life. By using like different color coding and visuals and using different activities, you can figure out how to, how to model your life in a way. Oh my gosh, I'm so sorry. I'll start from the top, sorry. One activity that I really enjoyed working on that highlighted expanding our creative thinking was creating schedules and decorating our ideal classrooms. Designing schedules was beyond filling time blocks. It's also about reimagining time management and encouraging creativity. You can color, you can use color coding and visuals to show how activities like reading, arts, group discussion, group discussions that we did in class can flow throughout the day. Incorporating brain breaks and creative time like journaling or open projects allows creativity to thrive, which Madame Boz helps us do in class by doing different speaking activities, different writing activities, different group projects. Like today, we did different group projects on different verbs that we've been learning. And the schedule itself can be interactive with illusions, patterns, and movable components that make it more engaging.
Okay, so the talk of the activity I worked on presenting here today was about families who are in need with kids who, with their families that can't afford school supplies every year. We watched videos, read about these families, and did activities on them. We got to see how other families and their problems with, had to deal with their economic, economic problems when they couldn't afford school supplies, how the community helped out and gave school supplies to the kids and their families who needed them. And here, and as people in our class are very fortunate to not have to probably go through this, we really took a different level of understanding how not everyone has what we have, have, and how it's not the same for everyone around the world. And we were put in different positions to use our critical thinking skills to understand how we could help solve these problems, how we could help other families feel better, always encouraging them and helping them if they're going through tough times. So, yeah.
Hi, so I'm going to highlight a project we did on an ethical dilemma. So our dilemma was based upon whether or not if it's a wrong pricing it brings up for school supplies, whether or not it's ethical not to tell the employee that was incorrect, especially if they were in one of its sector. Personally, I was surprised by this due to the fact that we don't do ethical dilemmas much in class, especially in a French class. And we also brought in values such as honesty, confidence, integrity, which was really surprising due to the fact that not many courses put impact or any emphasis on values, which make up our core aspects that I was talking about. Personally, that ethical dilemma was a incredible experience since you don't do that in many classes and it honestly helped you think better and clear your own values up as well. It helps develop moral compasses as well as it showing what you believe in. Thank you.
Good job. The last update I'd just like to highlight very quickly is we also just a few weeks ago held our academic fair, which previously was a theme fair. We've expanded it to include all areas and it was a great night, a successful night. So to speak about goal four, I'd like to introduce Ms. Fallon and Dr. Lebrun.
How are you?
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for having us here tonight. Thank you for all the student speakers and faculty. As we spoke before, we're going to go on to strategic planning before, which really is an extension of a lot of what you've heard, a lot of different ways about how we're promoting a culture of inclusion and belonging here. There's a variety of evidences of progress on the board, but you know, just to name a few. You know, we take learning beyond the classroom. We're not just focused on what happens inside the classroom. We're really exploring other opportunities for students to be engaged and have a great experience outside the classrooms. We're trying to combine a togetherness with our middle school. We're going out to our middle schools with our students and trying to create that easy transition for them as they come into the high school. We're committed to professional development, to be able to educate our teachers and continue their progress into being able to speak and communicate and teach every one of the students that comes into our building. We're wanting to make sure that we're including all our student voices in our future initiatives, including AI, which is a big one for obvious reasons. Our human major classes are still going over to our setting districts in terms to try to create their learning experiences and improve the learning experiences of others. We've incorporated Flex Age to really try to improve our ninth graders so that, for the experiences of our ninth graders with our upper classends, so that we're really trying to create a culture of belonging within our school. But with all, with that being said, the main advantage right here. This Thiago, he used to speak about our inaugural season, or his experience including our inaugural season to play Unified Flag Football. Your floor now.
Good evening. My name is Thiago Texira. And I am a postgraduate student here at Orchecil National High School. This is a big school and I love this school's environment. I was, I was happy to join the athletics program as a freshman. I enjoyed participating in spring track from ninth to twelfth grade, as well as winter track from tenth to twelfth grade. I loved to run and I had a lot of fun running with my teammates and having Mr. Benitez as my track coach. My best time was twelve point thirteen seconds. For the one hundred meter dash, this accomplishment made me feel marvelous. Being able to run with my teammates took a lot of work and effort, but it was worth it because I gained a lot of friends through my timing track. This year, our school started a new Unified Flag Football team. I felt happy to join the team with my friends from my classes and met new friends too. Flag football gives me a lot of emotions when playing on the field and scoring touchdowns. I love to cheer for my friends and have my friends cheer for me. I feel excited to contribute to my team and am proud that we won our first game ever against Roxbury last Thursday. Mr. Tranzano, Mrs. Getchman, Mrs. Averyd, Mrs. Thunberg, Ms. Clink, and Mrs. Hee are the best coaches ever. They teach us great flag football skills. Warm-up drills help us stay focused and give us a chance to exercise while having a lot of fun. I feel excited about making new friends and having the chance to be part of this awesome team. My time at the GHR chat has been rewarding. And I am so thankful to my teachers, my coaches, my friends, and my parents for loving me and giving their support. Thank you for letting me share my experience at Orchecil's, this, this school ever.
My grandmother used to phrase that my cup runs over. That my cup runs over after that. And that brings us to the end of our presentation. If you can stay up here for any overall questions or comments, or if you can refer to the other speakers if you guys care.
Thank you to everyone who came to present this evening. I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Lebrun.
Yes, thank you. That was great. Really appreciated and it's nice when you can see the fruits of our labor, of our two goals that we set and the accomplishments that are made. And some of you may know that we are working on a new strategic plan shortly and so I look forward to the overall future updates. So thank you very much. Thank you to all the students and faculty and everyone that's been involved. I know it's a lot of hard work, but it's certainly very productive and it's certainly worthwhile. We certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Take some food on your way out if you'd like, cookies and other treats.
No, I just, I just wanted to thank the faculty and staff and students that came out tonight. I thought they did a tremendous job showcasing the various aspects of the strategic plan. I also appreciated Mr. Spino and his group going through kind of the multi-tier systems of support. Sometimes it's a difficult concept for folks to understand. You get all these buzzwords and acronyms that are thrown around. But the, I thought they did an excellent job explaining how that structure works. Tier one is really to address, you know, all students. And tier one doesn't just involve the staff that's involved with that. That actually involves all of our staff. Everyone is responsible for playing a role in supporting, you know, the tier one system. Then you get to tier two, which tends to, you know, tier one is like eighty percent of our students. Tier two tends to be that, you know, fifteen percent of our students. And then tier one is five percent of our students. So it goes in a graduated way. And the whole idea of having those tiered systems is that we have in place the supports necessary that as a student may be experiencing some challenges or difficulties, that we have the capability within the building where they're more comfortable to try to handle most of those situations. And I just, I felt that it's really important to understand the critical role that that program plays across all of our students and that it's not just, oh, here's the thing that we're doing. It involves all of our faculty, all of our staff, understanding their role that they play and watching out for the best interests of our students.
Okay, before we go on to committee, I just want to double down on that. And I've said this so often, we as a board are focused on so much more than just the classroom with regards to whether it's the sciences, English, history, whatever it is. There's so much more that's going on. We spend a great deal of money, a great deal of resources, and we think it's extremely important. And that's why we dedicate so much to it. And see the fruits. This is just so much more and there's so much, so many opportunities for the students that are outside that so-called classroom.
So just one other thing I wanted to add quickly. When, when Dr. Jewett came here and when I was first elected to this board, we did not have a strategic plan. There was no document to guide us. There was nothing, no strategies, no priorities. We just kind of went, you know, wherever we went, based on whatever the whims of whoever decided that they had the authority to provide direction. You know, that's the way that it goes. When you have a large institution, like, like a high school or like a corporation or anything else, the strategic plan really becomes critical to provide the direction for the institution, regardless of who's in charge. So the strategic plan is not necessarily meant to forward a specific agenda for a specific administrator or for a specific board. It is supposed to forward the agenda for the community. And so the whole idea behind the strategic plan is so that it provides the directionality for the district, regardless of what the next board is, regardless of who the next superintendent is, regardless of any of those things. That sets the course, that sets the direction. And I want to add that I've been involved in a lot of strategic planning from a variety of different institutions, whether they're education, whether they're corporate, whether they're nonprofit, whether they're association-related. And I've seen strategic plans that have been written and then they get put on the shelf and then people move on and forget that they even did a strategic plan. So I think that's actually a tribute to the administration, to our faculty and staff, that they have actually worked to really embed the strategic plan into the institution. Mr. Siz embeds it into the budgeting process. And so really taking it from being a document to a living philosophy to guide the district is really, really critical and I think is certainly one of the most significant things that has happened during my time on this board and has driven a lot of the transformation that we're seeing on this campus across, across the entire organization. So I just wanted to highlight that because of, you know, after being on the board for twelve years, you see a thing or two. And I just, watching this transformation has been probably one of the more fulfilling things that I've been a part of in the twelve years that I've been on this board. So again, I just want to congratulate the, this board, the prior boards who had the vision to adopt it, the superintendent, the administration for implementing it, and the faculty members and the students for embracing it and moving it forward. It really has transformed this district in so many positive ways.
Thank you. We have a couple of committee reports this evening, education personnel, education, please.
Good evening, everyone. Oh, Happy Belated Mother's Day. All the moms and caregivers, without us, the world would literally stop spinning. So good job. Thank you. Keep it up. Good luck. The education committee, we met May sixth, two thousand and twenty-five at three thirty via Zoom. In attendance were Ms. Also, Mrs. Potter, Dr. Jewett, Ms. Caro, Mrs. Phelan, Dr. Lebrun, Mr. Spino, and Mr. Di Alessio. We have three topics. The first, GPA calculation. Dr. Lebrun informed us that the administration is looking to change the way unlevelled courses, for example, orchestra, chorus, Spanish one, et cetera, are weighted in the calculation of a student's weighted GPA. Currently, while CPA and honors-level courses all have weights associated with them, unlevelled courses do not. Thus, the weight of the unlevelled courses is below that of a CP-level course. The recommendation is to give unlevelled and CP courses the same weight in the weighted GPA calculation moving forward. The committee discussed the change and agreed with the recommendation and the student handbook will be updated with the change. The next topic was excused absence with reason. Dr. Lebrun explained that there has been some confusion with the dermat- no, with the terminology.
There is.
And I just put what was wrong. With the terminology categorizing absences. Excused absences are the state-approved absences, of which there are seven categories, and do not count towards a student's attendance, not a school's overall average daily attendance rate. For example, college visit, religious holiday. While a student being absent due to illness is a valid reason for an absence, it is not an excused absence by the state's definition. Therefore, in order to clarify this with students and parents, we are suggesting a change in how we code these types of absences to absence with reason. This indicates the absence is not due to truancy, but still counts towards a student's overall attendance record. The committee discussed a suit regarding excused versus unexcused absences and asked that it be made clear on the student handbook and communicated to the students and parents in advance. The last topic was assessments. We got a preview of the NJ SLA math and ELA results. Mr. Di Alessio, he spoke to the committee on the results of the NJ SLA assessments in math math and ELA for ninth-grade students. He enlisted AI to analyze the data for the past three years, from the year twenty-one, twenty-two through twenty-three, twenty-four, for Washington Hills Regional High School and our comp districts. Both our math and ELA performance have shown significant growth, both overall and compared to the comp districts. He explained that the increase was achieved through staff assignment changes, making students and teachers aware of items that would be on the test, and middle school articulation in these areas. Mr. De La Cio thanked the IT department for their help with the online testing, and the building and grounds department for their help with the desk setup. He even had a picture of the testing, how they set up the new furniture. It was lovely, and so we thank him for that. He made it very understandable and comprehensible. And summer reading, the summer reading list, sorry, I lied. The summer reading list has been finalized. The same procedures are in effect as last year, with only one change, the school-wide read was removed. As Phelan discussed, the book selection for each grade level. Our meeting adjourned at four twenty-seven P.M. Questions?
I was watching our students' reactions as you were going through some of those things.
I know.
Because I think they're devastated that the school-wide read was scum.
Yeah, they're upset. Joy out of it.
One thing I do want to just emphasize is that, and Lisa did a great job, thank you, of relaying all that, the, just for, when we're talking about the attendance, we're not changing the way anything counts, it's just the terminology, just to make it clearer because it is causing some confusion, since we were using excused to mean two different types of absences. So it's not changing our calculation, it's just excused will be used solely for the ones that are, that have fit, that meet the criteria for excused by the state, and don't actually count towards your total attendance. And absence with reason is what will be used for absences with a valid reason, but they all still count towards attendance. And I said that, I just want to make sure everyone's clear that it's not changing anything else. I also do want to, I should have said this earlier, but I want to commend Mr. De La Cio for the work he does on testing. He has it down to a science in terms of how to run it, and thanks to the way he runs it with Anthony Maluso and the rest of our administrative team, we are able to still have school. We do not have to have delayed openings for everyone else on those days, so instruction is able to continue, with the exception of the students in testing. And Mark Snowden, our new director of operations, did a fantastic job as well, making sure that there were no facility disruptions. You know, as you know, we have fire alarms go off at inopportune times and construction going on, and so he coordinated very closely with Mr. De La Cio to make sure that none of those things were occurred during the testing period. So I cannot thank them enough for how smoothly they oversee that so that we can actually still run school for the rest of the students. So, that's all.
When are we going to get the formal results of the presentation?
Oh, you want to, you're already excited for the next presentation. So, August, September, and October.
I'm going to be happy.
Well, we don't have the results yet, so stay tuned, but I anticipate you should be.
So I, Dr. Jewitt and maybe Dr. Lebrera can address this as well. Help me understand how there is a weighting of grades that is lower than CP?
So this is something that we noticed, and we didn't want to wait any longer to fix it, which is why we asked the education committee, are you okay with us just doing this? It's something that just has been, so we have our unweighted GPA and our weighted GPA. And for whatever reason, and this has just been the way it's been, I have no good reason to explain why, and I think it was purely, and this is another terminology piece, because they're not unweighted courses, they're unleveled courses. But what that translated into was then when a weighted GPA was calculated, a weight assignment was given to a CP level, an A level, and an honors level, they forgot about the courses that don't have a level in front of them. So they were in their own column, and when factored into the weighted GPA, there was no weight associated with them, so they actually, you know, counted less towards the weighted GPA than the CP-level course. So, and we do think that actually impacts students signing up for courses, because if they're figuring out, so that's why we're changing that. And one of the other things we're actually going to be looking at next year, so we're changing that immediately so that it's CP and unleveled are just one column. What we also want to do, and this will actually be one of the initiatives that our academic council, which is comprised of teachers and supervisors, will look at next year, is looking at some of the electives that are unleveled to see if we should possibly be assigning them a level. So that's the next, that's step two of this, so that will be brought to ed committee. So, yes, so you're, the consternation and confusion that you're expressing is, it does not make sense, which is why we said to the board, we'd like to make this change now, because it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, and I think the, so then what are the, what is the weight of unleveled courses?
It's just whatever, so, and it's in the ed committee folder, the weight of unleveled courses is the same. If you're calculating our unweighted GPA, it's whatever those weights are carry over to those courses. In fact, let me, I can give you an example. I can pull this up so that I don't want to miss speech. Okay, so, if you're looking at, and actually, I can project on the screen if you'd like. So, if you're just looking at grade quality points or an unweighted GPA, this is what goes in to figure out what your GPA is based on what your grade is. So you can see, four point O is the top of the scale. If you go to calculating your weighted GPA, you can see that the top of the scale goes to four point five for CP, four point nine for A, and five point three for honors. And our, this is what the old chart said, this, it says nonweighted. It really, these are the unleveled courses that just carry with them the same weight from the nonweighted GPA. So what we are doing is, this is the immediate change, where anything that's unleveled will have the same weighting as CP for, when calculating the weighted GPA. And then step two is to take a look at any of those unleveled courses to see if they actually should have a leveling to them. Some of them, it is appropriate that they're at a CP level, for example, you know, Spanish one, that's an introductory course, and so that's the leveling of that course. But for some of the electives, for example, some of the music electives, some of the art electives that are unleveled, we're going to take a look at those and see if we want to possibly assign a level, or be able to differentiate. There's some different things that schools do, because we, the thing we also want to be careful about is we don't want to level something, make it all of a sudden an honors level, so that students don't sign up for it because they don't want an honors-level elective. However, there may be a way, what's, for example, what some schools do is in an honors music or art course, you may have to do things outside of the class for that honors credit, like audition for certain things or perform in certain venues, you know, things like that. So that's what we're going to look at next year.
And I get that, but that's already required by law.
The, well, we have that, just not for every course, meaning the differentiation. Yes.
And that's why I'm bringing this up, because this was a big issue fifteen years ago, where we ended up working with Senator Granick to create legislation that Governor Christie signed in two thousand sixteen, that required that courses that were presented were, that courses would be weighted equally with other courses of equal rigor, and equal rigor being the key there, so that certain things that would be able to get, you know, A level or honors was, you know, handled appropriately, because of the fact that all over the state we had people doing all sorts of crazy things, trying to determine how they're going to weight certain things. There are some districts that were only given half or three-quarters credit, so even, so that four would have been a three. And that creates barriers, you know, as you mentioned earlier, for students being able to participate in things that they're passionate about versus the things that are going to impact their GPA. So I'm surprised that this was going on, I thought that could be better.
So we had fixed it in some places, and this was one of the ones that we missed. So this, that's why I'm glad the board was okay with us moving forward with this, because we did level some things, we didn't make other adjustments, and this was something that somehow was left, and so we're going to fix that.
Thank you, Bones. Bill?
Anything you can share with the personnel?
Yes, so the personnel committee met on May fifth at three-thirty. The president, myself, Mr. Marycheck, Ms. Lay, Ms. Trumpworth, Dr. Jewitt, Mr. Styes, Ms. Carrow, and we discussed, which actually is going to be actionable today, is the comprehensive equity plan. In August of two thousand twenty-three, the state board of ed re-adopted NJAC six A seven, which mandates the development of a three-year comprehensive equity plan for each school district. The CEP will cover three school years, two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-six to two thousand twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-seven to two thousand twenty-eight. Within the district, the affirmative action team had to analyze data to assess the needs for achieving equity in educational activities using the grid provided by the NDOE. The team completed the comprehensive equity plan needs assessment, found two areas which are not in compliance. First one is a review of the testing data from the NJSLA and NJGPA reveals an achievement gap between students with disabilities and students without disabilities in math and in English. Second one is a review of discipline records, indicates that there are significantly more male students and female students, and more minority students than non-minority students represented in detentions, suspensions, and expulsions. Action plans were developed to address, excuse me, both of these needs. Ms. Carrow reviewed the action plans that were developed. And secondly, the annual review, renewals of tenured teachers was discussed for support staff, instructional aides, security aides, part-time bus drivers. And on May thirteenth, the board of ed agendas are renewals of the following faculty and staff, and tenured teachers, support staff, instructional aides, security aides, and part-time bus drivers. And lastly, we did a preview of C items. Ms. Carrow reviewed and discussed the C items with the committee, and we adjourned at four P.M.
Thank you. All right, great. It's now its first opportunity for public comment. First public comment period will be limited to agenda items for this evening only. The second public comment period will be open to any comment. All comments are limited to five minutes. If you have any public comments. Okay, so you know, none? First opportunity for public comment is closed. As I mentioned earlier, Susan Ober has resigned her seat on the board. Tim, if you can give us a little rundown of the process required to fill that seat for Long Hill Township, and the process, and then the election.
Okay, so the resignation was received on April thirtieth. That means the sixty-five-day window starts on May first. So you got, I think it was July, I think it was March, it's July fifth. To appoint someone, or else we have to go to the county superintendent, if you don't want to. May thirteenth, we're accepting the resignation of the board, date is back to that April thirtieth date. And then I have a, I put a little advertisement that we used last time for Peter Powell's position, unless you guys see anything that you like in it, I would suggest you use that. That goes out between tomorrow and then the end of the month. I asked the deadline to be, I said June fifth, to receive the resumes and information. And then on June seventeenth, the, on what we've done last time, so we interviewed the candidates in, and were deliberates and executive, we can appoint that, they can be sworn in, and they have thirty days to complete their commitment, which is, and that's basically the process.
They can start before they're put in the background?
Yeah, they, Mark said they can actually be sworn in, which is a little different than the last time we did it.
Yeah.
I was surprised when you said that.
And then this position will have to rerun for the...
So it's the completion of the term, right?
I think it's only, no, no, because it's as far enough before the election that it's just the completion of the year.
Right, right, it's just the year, and then they have to run.
And then when they run, they're running for the remainder of the uninspired term.
Correct, yes.
Jim, what was the date again? Tell us the dates again, for some reason I missed it.
So, all right, so...
What's the date for the applications? That's the one I missed.
June fif- June fifth, yeah.
So then that means the seventeenth would, the seventeenth would be the meeting that we would do the interviews and deliberate. Have we, when we've done that in the past, have we started earlier in order to accommodate that? Because, I mean, I'm trying to remember how we did it before, because...
No, you did, you started on regular time.
It might, it might have been on how many...
You would know, right?
It may also, we might have seen it, like, we didn't have a lot of people and didn't have a lot on the agenda that night, possibly.
Oh, that could be.
So I guess we could always see how many people we get.
I think it was on a lot on the agenda that night.
I'm sure we're having a long list of people applying, so we might need to start the meeting at four o'clock.
June agenda, it's made to be ready. Okay, great, thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to move items A one through A four, and A seven through A nine.
Second.
Any discussion on those?
I'd like to make a comment on A four. I just want to thank Ms. Ober for her years of, many years of service on the board and her dedication. I personally enlist her passion and her candor, and that she always stood up for what was right, and she always supported the rights of all the students and families of Washington Hills.
Are we going to do a special?
We're going to recognize her with the retirees on June third.
I will reserve comment for that. Anything else? I just enthusiastically second these factors for us.
Roll call then. Mr. Maggio?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Marycheck?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Potter?
Yes.
Ms. Prassa?
Yes, I'm standing on A one and A two.
Ms. Trumpworth?
Yes.
And Mr. Berner?
Yes.
And Ms. Carrie?
Mr. President, I'd like to move items A five and A six.
Any discussion on those? Roll call. Mr. Maggio?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Marycheck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Prassa?
Yes, I'm standing on A one and A two.
Ms. Trumpworth?
Yes.
And Mr. Berner?
Yes.
Mr. President, I'd like to move items C one through C ten, and C twelve through C eighteen.
Second.
Any discussion on those items? Roll call. Mr. Maggio?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Marycheck?
Yes.
Ms. Marycheck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Potter?
Yes.
Ms. Prassa?
Yes.
Ms. Trumpworth?
Yes.
And Mr. Berner?
Yes.
And Ms. Carrie?
Just sort of how it's, where are we? We moved C eleven on the agenda this evening. We'll be voting on that the next meeting. There's a couple corrections and modifications, so I want to think that we ignored it, but we will address it the next meeting.
And Mr. President, I'd like to move items D one through D twenty-two.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, there's a discussion on D five. Sorry. I'll be voting yes on this, but I just wanted to note that, from what I understand, and I have to say this, I mentioned this to Mr. Stein just now, so it's not, maybe a change, but it looks like the total due on that bill is the total amount, even if we don't do eight sessions. So I just thought it'd be just something to note that in the future, if we're going to do this, because the quote is...
students that just now, so it's not, maybe a change, but it looks like the total due on that bill is the total amount, even if we don't do eight sessions. So I just thought it'd be, just something to note, and in the future, if we're going to do this, because the quote is per session, is we should have the ability to not have all eight sessions, or some sort of less than the total amount of one of the sessions. That's my comments on that. I will be voting yes.
Just to clarify, the RFP is sent out requesting a lump sum fee. Some of them, like Madison, may have per session cost informational, but the actual request cost for a lump sum. So that's why the recommendation is for $26,000. The board doesn't have to use their specific plan, it actually tells you, they tell you that it can be modified, although they're recommending this particular approach, which is how they give us their fee.
Yeah, just, I, I'm not even picking this contract out per se.
Right.
I'm just saying, if it's literally said per session, then I'm just saving the contract. And I'm saying this for the future, not for this one.
Yeah.
It's just feedback.
Go ahead. And then I just want to comment on D14, donation from $150 from Chi Lung Lin and Chaomi Tien to be used toward the expenses associated with TEDx. And then also six rowed lifting bars donated by Mr. John Benvenuto, thank you, for use in our white room. And then also acknowledging the donations that were used for Career Day from NJ4S for $2,500 for the assorted foods from the Forest Lodge, as well as the Danish's coming in by Asia's Bakery in South Plamen. Yes, thank you for the donations. Anything further?
Mr. Maggio?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Marycheck?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Potter?
Yes.
Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Trumpor?
Yes.
And Mr. Berner?
Yes.
Motion's carried. Second opportunity for public comment. Again, this is, comments on any item in the school? Comments limited to five minutes. Any comments? The public comment's all. Okay, so now we're going to close those public comments. Do we have any other business on this? Okay, we don't have any other business. I will have to take a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? We are adjourned, thank you, everybody.